Jonathan Blair. Sorry, Blair. Mary George Crook. Emily and Hudson. Thank you, baby. Scarlett Eve. Keesley Jackson. Zoe Keen. Harper Motes. Colin Pugh. Turner Rose. Angela Star. Zaylee Sons. And I think it was Ivy Webb. Okay, that'd be great. Again, we're so proud of you guys for how you represent your community. And you know, it takes hard work to be a tent. That same kind of hard work would get you through life. Thank you, Ellen.
Parker, put your jacket on my table.
All right, you ready? One, two, three, smile. Perfect, thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, Derrick, come on up, buddy.
Come on. It's okay. Speak loud so people on the campus can hear you.
Yeah.
I don't have any business, but on current business, we have, it should be after this and confirm all of you this year, 2024, Canada Championship. All the same roads still, the list, this is just the one that we're going to use the CRE FAF money for. So it has to be approved for the. So we narrowed it down to this particular road. Use all money, send it by way of work, just see how long it works. But it's all passing to get approved tonight.
Here's somebody something right here, dude.
What is it?
All right, go ahead, Derrick comes over.
Yeah, it's just, I'd like to ask to get this approved.
Yeah, what is it?
Other than that, the, the speed bumps, the night speed bumps.
We got a question, town lights.
Yeah, I, this is what me, what Jimmy brought to us and he's been working with mine's down council. They got Derrick, we've got the cost in here. I think we talk if everybody's minimal, contribute half of the total and then let Derrick and then put them down as, then let the town lights take the other half. Works we got on.
The only other thing I have on this is personnel. I have a resignation affecting ways I refer anything else. He's a part-time guy.
Some ever said this again, person.
Well, we're currently appetized now. For operating one position already.
He's part-time.
Yeah, he's part-time. So hopefully maybe some of our candidates, whichever, maybe recommend that our priority for full-time, you know, hopefully there's potential eligibility to hire, let us hire two, one full-time, one part-time.
What do you have?
That's all okay.
Questions can come in.
Come in. On 5504, we done the great, we had outstanding job, like seeking to get some gravel on top of it, cause it's mud.
Right.
Cause that way, I believe we got, we don't go into the rain, cause.
Yeah, I feel like we were just waiting to see how it figured in the next training.
It looked really good, I looked at my front.
Cause we were afraid we might have to pull that bike back out.
Yeah.
So we wanted to wait.
All right, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
So we got, I think I told you the other day, we did get some, some calls, thanks for the, what we did at the railroad in town as our temporary, but we had, we had any luck in communicating railroad on our options, but.
Yes, they're, they contacted us and they're getting together some cost estimates or, you know, I've tried what they're turning on before, but basically the cost estimates, what it costs to, there's a little bit of repair work that needs to be done on the approach right there at Crossing. And to put up the option of maybe some new flashing, flashing lights there on the apartment on the track. I asked them too about the Gayhorn. They haven't got a really answer back yet, I'm waiting for their response on the cost estimates. But the fact is, isn't that.
What is it? Anybody else?
We got our, just two speed signs we've ordered, they coming in? They're in it. Yes, well, I don't think we've had a chance to put them up yet, to get them installed, but we've got both of them in office. Very good.
When you say you'd work in getting them put up in the county police, let us know.
Are we, are we working all plan up through work orders or are y'all planning up very as you go?
Yeah, we're planning up pretty as we go to, you know, mostly as we go. We haven't been able to dedicate, you know, just a couple of people strategically through the week to plan that. So I had a, you know, a wide range of effort as of yet. And I don't know if that'll get a lot better when we start bush hunting here. But we're gonna have a couple of weeks in between finishing up jungle work and starting the bush hunting season, if none of the bids come in adequately, to jump on more people. But as of right now, it's been limited, just a few people.
What I want to make sure of is if we're getting that slowly, I don't want to start dropping a bunch of work we've done. If we weren't, then I want to make sure we found a couple of sites.
What do you feel like if, I know we talked about this here, right after that storm, what do you feel like it costs? What we have to dig up for you to bring some aid, if you just get that stuff out of the way, before we do the follow-up?
Um, I mean, honestly, I don't know, I would have to, I'd really have to look, I mean, but it would be upwards of $152,000. Pay someone to come up on that, I'm afraid. I mean, it would be, it would be very expensive.
I'm trying to be explain.
Yeah, I think the last thing that we've done, I think it was, I think it was over $10,000 in 2020. So it was pretty expensive and we don't have quite as much change. With them, from the last time, so I'm pretty sure.
How do we, how do we feel for the, for that five yardage you pulled away or by the hour or whatever?
Yeah, it's by cubi yards. When we do that, we have to set up like monitoring sites and we have to measure each truck that it come in and the judgment based on percentage full. And we calculate the overall volume of the truck and we pay for cubi yard.
You go.
Thank you, Derek.
Do you need Mr.?
Come on. There is some movement on our adjustment mediation grants, so you know, they have called requesting some additional information. So that's a positive sign. As long as they're requesting information, they are very, very, very far behind compared to our, you're correct. So I don't have data on that right now, but we are continuing to work on it. There is another grant program just came out, it's only 1.3 million dollars for the entire state that we can apply for, we're not allowed to apply for any portion of that. Is there something that you would like to consider, even if it's a small amount of money?
What qualifies?
Any of our counties qualify, all, every county I'm at will qualify.
I mean, what?
This adjustment mediation, we need to make the mitigation. Most neighborhoods are, you know, doing, playing on road work with it.
Claiming that our storm free, except, or something like.
Uh, that wouldn't be a mitigation, that would be a response. You know, it's not enough money to really look at our shelves about if we had anything for, you know, $20,000, $30,000.
What about the fire station, the permanent building, they're trying to get up in shareholders?
That will not qualify.
Okay.
Everything we had on our plan, that we hadn't already gotten some sort of funding cycle or attempting to, is expensive, isn't it? And I'm thinking about Whitewater Creek, I know we never got any funding on that, but that was a fairly expensive venture.
I mean, all fire, I think, you know, we, we don't discuss like this, you know, trying to, let's just volunteer fire, if you want to come do something with them anymore.
They need some air packs, I know that they didn't ask for that, they were trying to standardize the ask with that all the turnout here, but you may could reach out to. What about the radios, Russell, that you're asking me about? Yeah, but we have, we have the mitigation money on our radios, but.
No, you're talking about, I have a lot of money, I actually have some phone with the Chief Stevens and Fire Department, they're trying to get this new radio system up and running. That they would sit in the county, all on one system, where we can do something for volunteer fire, where they can communicate all of the shelves and some of our existing radios. But you're talking two, three hundred thousand dollars just to get started.
Even if they, if that qualified, even if you got just whatever we felt like we could get, you know, if the radios did qualify, if you couldn't get five of them, might be worth it, yeah.
Well, let me check and see, make sure those do qualify, which you can allow them to pick up.
And then we, you know, we also partnered with them, the, the training requirements that, that we wrote into the agreement are basically, I think they came due this past year, but, you know, we'll make you do something with the offsets on their continual, continued training. I know they have the propane truck, something here, burn truck, you know, there's, there's continued training requirements.
Well, let me look at those, and we've got time, if somebody will ever attend, we'll meet at the end of October. Got to be submitted, so if I can pull some information, we can see what's going, we can.
And then that ambulance that we haven't got delivered up, if we got it, get it up. That's all good.
I'm only waiting on ambulance now, they're waiting on call, they may as well be up.
Yeah, good news, no, not this fire.
Is it a, is it a way that we could get commissioners and all of the volunteer fire, get to be on the scene? What they need, still, you know, one, two, three, is meet as a group somewhere, a year. And that way, we know, and the buck knows what kind of condition the volunteer fire department, like, oh shoot, they meet there, they, they find the most important, well, then, by cattle, the distance, they build up, we have to go. And so make sure somebody that everybody has some good, today their communication. In that way, I know we can get them around, I mean, against Bill Crawford or stuff like that. You know, say I fall, it'll fall out your hand, cause you can't, you know, but it's just, we need to get together and that, everybody talk about having input on it, and so what we can do about it, and you help do it, but.
We've got home to several of their association meetings, next time they have one, I'll make sure you got that email. Cause that's where, like, a lot of the stuff we're talking about, that's where a lot of it's come out of.
Yeah.
That turnout here, I think they came, that's where that has.
We asked, but that came up at the association meeting, from that one.
Uh, the only other thing I have is on the September 23rd football game is going, we're working with the University Athletics, it's going to be a first responder recognition, they're trying to expand that all the way up to all our staff, we fell down to go into first responders, you know, like the game, the tickets, but also just for the recognition, and that was just that, that's why you just have to record them, for you, you know, whether that sponsor that or that, which is driving, running all our first responders and recognizing everybody there.
What else, Mr.?
Calling up.
You better get more questions.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I would like, you, you done much with homeland security grants, in finance, Mr. Turner?
Done much.
Homeland security grants, you ever put any?
Um, yeah, we've done, um, this recently did these of the $50,000, you know, that's a regular quarter. But now they're pretty much cut and dry.
Yeah.
These are, they're an annual grant.
I, 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 there's, I'm, I'm trying to, I'd like you to help me facilitate, I can facilitate getting them on you if you would host them into talk. David Thomas from Sheriff's Department is looking at one.
Mm-hmm.
And Buford, Chief Stevens from Troy Fire, had mentioned something to me about the new complex. They are, I'm trying to get the Sheriff's Department, Troy PD and Fire, and when I say Fire, Buford is bringing the volunteers in on this too. They, they want a burn house to train the volunteers and our local firemen, and the SOPD wants a shoot house. And they have found a set of plans for a burn slash shoot house that they can practice. I mean, the Troy Fire Department can train in, they can bring the volunteers up and train them in it, and the next day, the SWAT team can train dismantling, doorwork clearing, you want me? And David thinks he's found a homeland security grant that would qualify, but out of having the sage wisdom, you've got on some of that stuff, I'd like to see if you could help ring me get that.
We can definitely do that, you know, if you'll get it today, or if I said I'll leave it today. We had talked about something like this previously, we had a lunch with all the chiefs, trying to get some type of job, trying to certainly clean the fire, clean the shoot house, I know the city's got some.
You know, the comment that was made to me, and I feel like there is, we run, I think there's plenty of room in the, down the, between the N11 building and the new range, to have a little site like this, that would, the volunteers could use, city, county, it would be, you know, something. But David has seen the grant that he thinks, well, I want to try to hire it, that will wait it, trying to get the city, county, and the volunteers all together, apply for something like that, you know, whatever we can do, definitely I'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly how we want to lay the city, make it more favorable in this regard, I think.
Well, I will get, begin to, if I'll get everybody, get an email together and move, get a mail call for the panel, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any committee member report?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna leave by Thursday, about, we have a lot of problems, we don't have patients, people paying for this, trying to do the jail. It was one county, it was, it was working on states, about trying to still put the real patients in, for the jails, and we need to find somewhere else to put them, because sometimes I have to put them in the same cell with, uh, the inmates, you know, so they, they can get out of attention and stuff like that. And we've had twelve hundred inmates and negotiate, we, y'all are mental health focuses, mental focuses, you know, in our county, we know how to know a whole lot of money, just, you know, somebody to take a house or release a property, but, you know, some of these mental health, we got, we, we need to get on something, I hope they support my last year, and that's trying to make emphasis on mental health, and trying to get a lot of folks, you know, they, they, uh, like you said, but anyway, they need more attention than them, what they get.
Well, the, um, so the, the new state prisons that are being built, the one in Elwood County is, has a mental wing, and I may not be stating that just right, but it's, it's got a, it's more, it has a mental wing and it also has a hospital wing in, it's part of the state prison system. But to Mr. Turner's point, there was a lot of the conversations around this week of, you know, if you look at the, the lack of mental health rooms and the increased inmates in our prisons, they correlate, right? I mean, there is a lot of help, and I know the sheriff and, in our new jail, they've made accommodations for that in some way. And I know the sheriff's staff is, is looking at that, and he said for mental health is a, I think a tool we use to, to help do that locally. I don't know of anything in public that we can do, but it's a good idea to bring awareness.
Anything else at the convention that will help? Anything else from the convention?
Lots of good.
Yeah, good information.
Good information.
Everybody should build up the needs.
Well, you all got to go, it's always good, always is, thank you. All right, the kids.
Okay, first, um, under our force, there'll be a budget revision. This revision is from where Derek, Kenny, Jim, myself sat down and discussed, ways to try to find money to, to complete the projects that we need, that needs to be completed before the end of this year for road projects. So essentially what this is, the budget revision that's going to reallocate money that was set aside, really just meant next year on these projects, but we need to go ahead and spend it this year on the projects. So it's just a budget revision to allow us to go ahead and move forward. We're doing that this year, and that's not in the budget for next year, so we need, we knew we were going to have to come back and try to do it on this year. The next item, moving down the current business, we've got a few items under the county jail. The first of those is going to be to cancel the rental of the properties that we were being used for the juvenile probation office and the storage for the voting machines, and they're being also used for circuit clerk storage. They cleaned out those offices, my understanding is juvenile probation ASC was coming down to pick up furniture today, so we need to notify them and give them thirty days notice, that would be as of October 1st, that we will then all be leasing those buildings and those storage, uh, storage places come in. The next item is the resolution designated judicial complex as a courthouse annex for the absentee election manager's office. We failed to add that into our annexation resolution last time, so we just need to go ahead and go get that taken care of tonight. The next item is also for the, that relates to the absentee election management office, and this would be to move the absentee precinct location from the old county courthouse to the judicial building, which is where it may be, because of who the absentee election manager is. There's no questions on that, I have another item that I have placed a copy in front of you all that we got today. It's the security system contracts for the fire systems at the jail judicial building and logistics building. Those are the agreements for those systems. There's also one on our annual for the testing and inspection of those systems. And then there's also the monthly charges for service for monitoring at those three locations. But we'll make a little bit of it in the fridge tonight. And then I have another item that came in late this afternoon, up under there, so I guess it would be at E, up under the jail. The sheriff has gone in, they have pretty much cleared out the old county jail, but there's a lot of property that still has some life left in it, such as, from microwaves, fridge, freezers, old washer dryers, window air conditioning, some stuff that we'd like to surplus and they let him go out and probably put these on love deals, which is an online auction that we've used before, this approved these, to sell these items before we look at demolition, our jail. So I put a copy of that list in front of you all, if we can get that approved, then we can go ahead and get that put out there and start getting that moved out of, out of your way. Let me check some stuff.
Question on the hair security. The, um, there's several pages, I, I guess are options, one is a wire, one is a saber, but is this monthly, is this a one time, I'm trying to?
The, there's three that are test and inspection agreements, that'll be an annual cost, and then the pages that I think you're talking about, um, are the.
Okay, there's, there's three different proposals, okay, that makes.
Yes, for three, for three different bills, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I got, I'm sorry, I thought this was one for every.
Yeah, but. There's that, then, there's also, so we've had quite a few things come in this afternoon. Um, those are all the items there up under the jail, uh, moving on down to current business two, just to give you an update, the, um, what we had to budget here and after our meeting tonight, to talk more about that, um, the heads of the voting center precinct, we've gotten some information, Commissioner Payton has provided some stuff on that, and we're gonna work on getting some resolutions prepared, and to have them reviewed by attorneys to make sure that they are done correctly, cause we have not done precinct changes like this since two thousand and twelve, and that was back, and we had to go through precincts and stuff, and everything's different now, we don't have to dig all that up, so, we want to get some more items on that and make sure that they're done right, to bring y'all's approval, but we have to have that in the next meeting or two, to get those done so that they have time to get everybody notified for their changes in voting places. Under, let's see, uh, number eleven, the juvenile detention annual contracts, that's senior package, um, this is saying that they are annually, this is just something we need to approve before we're going in, and then I, our call license transfer request, we've not held that many days, and they kept holding it dormant, we've gotten the proof of advertising it, so we can't take any action upon that, um, I would like to add that we got an additional email from President Judge, he was not able to make it tonight, um, but he did have an employee to resign, and so he is requesting that we accept the resignation and to advertise for pressing research, uh, to, to the pre-bay office.
He brought this advertising, Kim, did he, he was up talking about tonight, and said he was in Tuscaloosa, is there anything we can, we can't go all, move on with advertising to that resolution, if it's correct, or not?
Advertising, what?
You were trying to show us, Dave?
No, I thought he was talking about. Okay, he, he went, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I was pretty saying, but he.
Now, he's talking, yeah, he does have the advertising for that.
We were having a security conversation, and he said, don't let her get the advertising, yeah, all right, we're all safe there.
All right.
I do believe, I did, I'll say place in front of y'all, just so I'll see it, some emails that I've received, it's Friday, um, for you to review, but I forward those on to Arrow Disposal.
Okay, okay.
And then that's, I'll have a couple names for the budget here, but we'll discuss those one time for the budget here.
You better get your questions for the, the minister, the what? The budget here.
Oh, oh, pleasure.
So I guess what we're talking about, um, I think, um, Commissioner Ryan did as well, but we did speak with Arrow last week, and kinda, Commissioner Baron, I know, did as well, and kinda pressed on our, the issues that we've been having on our, um.
We all three had told them.
I think Commissioner Pearson did as well, I think, I think they had, it seemed like anything around the corner.
Well, they had, they have no, I don't know, y'all probably know that are down there, they have hired an additional, um, person, um, management, to try to help us with some of the problems we're having here, and he has been very receptive, he's answered phone calls, texts, um, that sort of thing, and today, I talked to him a couple of times on the phone today, um, they're trying to base some work on it, so.
I hope he gave everybody his card, when I was telling him about, we have some problem, he said, I said, you call the office there, you know, if nobody from this office called, we kind of give a customer card, where to go, just call him, and let him know where the problem was at, he'll get up and talk with it, cause I guess he goes by the caller, you commission, you.
New caller? Anything else from the key? Thank you. Okay, commission work session will now come to a close, and we will reconvene at six P M. or any weekend.